Good evening. My name is Jason Perot, Chairman, and I call it to order this June 14th, 2021, regular meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen. This open Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency, soon to be dispensed with in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is referenced at the top of our posted agenda for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. This meeting is being conducted remotely using the Zoom conferencing application. Our posted meeting agenda notes the various means by which the meeting can be viewed. You can connect via Zoom link to the webinar. You can connect via Zoom by audio phone only. You can view the live stream via the YouTube link. You go to the town website, look for the Remote Meetings button, and that will take you to the place where you can view the live stream, or you can watch by local cable access Verizon Channel 30, Charter 192. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. Participants, be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to share your screen. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Permitting me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes, I will introduce each agenda item and its speaker. After the speaker concludes the presentation, I will invite board members to offer their comments, questions, or emotions. If the agenda item is a public hearing, I will invite public comments specific to that matter at that time. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to respond to other members, please request to do so through the chair. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. I'd like to now confirm access to the board members and staff members who are participating throughout the meeting. I am Jason Perot, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Leslie Rattan, Vice Chair. Please acknowledge right by voice. Thank you. Scott Rogers, Clerk.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch, Member.
Present.
And Kristen Wickstead, Member.
Present.
Additionally, we have Town Administrator John Quader.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
And Fire Chief and Zoom Host for this evening, David Parenti.
Present.
Thank you all. We also have the Services of Northborough Cable Access to provide live viewing of this meeting on cable channels. We will confirm additional remote participants at the time they're brought into the meeting for their respective agenda items. As to the details of public comment, I will address that when we reach that point in the agenda. And I think that takes us to the agenda. So, first item of business, approval of the May 17, 2021 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Leslie?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the May 17, 2021 Selectman Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perot, vote aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. It's past the hour of 7:00 PM. We have William Liver, Police Chief, appointment of Daniel Martin as police officer. And we should have going to promote Daniel to a panelist. And hello, Daniel.
Hello, sir.
Nice to see you this evening. Chief Liver, could you make the presentation?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, through the board members. I'd like to welcome Daniel Martin. I'm going to ask you shortly to appoint him as a full-time police officer in Northborough. Daniel is a Grafton, Massachusetts resident. Oh, native, I should say. Graduated from Grafton High School. He is a 2018 graduate of West Virginia University, where he obtained his bachelor's degree in criminology with a minor in forensic sciences. And he is a recent, as in May 27th, graduate of the Cape Cod Municipal Police Academy. So, we were able to secure an academy graduate. Daniel did very well through the interview process. That consisted of an early on phase with Moderator Fred George, some of the folks on my department, and Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. He did very well. He impressed them. I met with him myself, and he is also, in addition to being an academy graduate, he put himself through the academy, which is no small task. That's six months of no income. That's six months of providing your own resources, uniforms, equipment. And it takes, it's a fairly significant contribution and commitment to getting through. I like academy sponsors because it shows that they're really dedicated to the job, and it saves us a lot of money. We don't have to pay them to go to the academy. So, there are few and far between these days because everybody's hiring, and there are very few people applying. But that said, I would like to turn it over to the board if they have any questions of Daniel. In addition to being an academy graduate, I do like to say that he's six foot four, and he's an athletic guy. So, that's a plus for us. So, he's a football player, basketball player in school, and he's quite an athlete. So, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief. I had the privilege of sitting in on the final interview round last week with with the chief. And Daniel, I just want to say, you certainly acquitted yourself very well through that process. And as the chief mentioned, kind of self-sponsoring yourself through the academy certainly is an indication of your, as he said, commitment and motivation to pursue this career path. So, that certainly speaks strongly of your intentions, and we're certainly happy to have you coming on board here in Northborough.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any words you'd like to offer at this time?
Yeah, it's a privilege and an honor to serve the town of Northborough, and I'm looking forward to getting started.
Great, thank you. Board members, any comments? Leslie?
First of all, thank you very much for choosing Northborough. You certainly check off a lot of the boxes here. You have a wonderful educational background, and the fact, as chief mentioned, that you put yourself through the academy and shows your dedication and commitment to what you're doing. So, we're really happy to have someone like you here, who has obviously been wanting to do this kind of work for a long time. There's nothing wrong with someone who majors maybe in French and then decides that they want to do this, but the fact that you, you know, have done this all along and have shown your interest and your commitment to this kind of work is quite commendable. So, thank you very much for being here and for choosing us.
Thank you.
Any other board members wish to comment? Scott Rogers.
Yeah, just to thank you, Daniel, for joining and to being willing to serve in Northborough. Thanks a lot.
Absolutely.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Daniel Martin to the position of police officer effective June 15th, 2021.
Second.
Moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perot, also vote aye. Carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Martin. You are now appointed to the Northborough Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Chief, you had mentioned you'll take care of the oath of office with the town clerk.
Yes, sir, I will. And he will be appointed conditional upon completing some of the hiring process components that we proceed, his physical and psychological evaluation in particular, which he has already passed due to other employment opportunities. So, but we need to have our own on file. So, I have no concerns there. He was also highly recommended by two chiefs of police that he worked for part-time down in Wareham and Nantucket. So.
Excellent. Excellent. Very good then. Thank you, Daniel. We appreciate your being here this evening, and we look forward to seeing you on the force.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congrats.
The next item is the reappointment of special police officers. Once again, Chief Liver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the board. It's annual housekeeping. We have two special police officers, retired Sergeant James Bruce and Erica Agro. She just simply works as a special police officer. Our policy is that they get reappointed each year, and that's simply because as part-time employees, we have to make sure that they maintain all of their certifications that are also required of full-time officers. It's a little bit more difficult for them, and I can assure you that they have completed all of their requirements. So, they're capable of being reappointed. So, I would ask you to do that.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chief. Board members, any questions or comments?
I have.
Kristen, yes.
Um, just could you explain what a special police officer is to me? That's just a term I'm not familiar with.
Some towns call them reserve officers, auxiliary officers. There's a specific legislation that allows the Board of Selectmen to appoint special officers, and their authority is basically regulated by the conditions set upon them at the time that they're hired. Our special police officers are granted full police authority when they're on duty, but no authority when they're off duty. And we basically use our special police officers for special events, for parades, Apple Fest, to supplement our full-time officers. But predominantly throughout the course of the year, you'll see them working construction details on the side of the road. They're not used in a capacity, in a full, in a police cruiser to augment or supplement a patrol type situation, simply because they're part-time officers, and we don't utilize them in that capacity.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Chief, could you also just briefly describe Jim Bruce's background?
Oh, sure. Sergeant Jim Bruce worked on the police department for over 30 years. I could go on and on. Jim Bruce and I were friends since we were 14 years old. So, it was just a phenomenal sergeant on the police department. He went through the ranks, patrolman, detective sergeant, became our senior sergeant. Grew up in Northborough, actually prided on employment on the police department. He was a full-time firefighter, paramedic, one of the firsts on the fire department, and transitioned to the police department. And he retired approximately five years ago. So, he's, again, fully certified, and he can work, he can basically do anything we ask up to 960 hours a year. I could use him in a cruiser, but we don't because I don't think he'd want to.
Any other questions or comments? Leslie?
I just wanted to add that both Jim and Erica are both great individuals, and I highly recommend their reappointments. Fantastic to have them as part of our police department.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. If there are no other questions or comments, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to reappoint James Bruce as a special police officer for a one-year period through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perot, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Do I have another motion, Julianne?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to reappoint Erica Agro as a special police officer for a one-year period through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Leslie Rattan. Once again, a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perot, vote aye. Carries unanimously. So, we have our two special officers reappointed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chief Liver. Appreciate it. It's now past the hour of 7:10 PM. We have Scott Sharpentier, DPW Director, acceptance of grant funds from the state for the reservoir dam removal project pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to discuss the grant award that we received from the state. Northborough Water Department owns a dam that's located in Boylston and Shrewsbury. It's actually on Reservoir Street, just over the town line. It used to serve as the town water supply for Northborough. That use was discontinued back in 1954. It serves no useful purpose. There is no butter access to the dam, to the, to the water body, the reservoir. The town of Northborough owns all its surrounding property. So, it hasn't been used for, you know, many decades. The Office of Dam Safety deemed it to be in poor condition. It's a significant hazard dam, which means there are downstream infrastructure and homes that would be jeopardized by a potential dam failure. So, because it's a significant hazard dam in poor condition, the Office of Dam Safety ordered the town to either remove it or repair it. Now, the removal and repair costs for dams are substantially different. This dam, as I said, serves no useful purpose. We did a limited feasibility study for dam removal that was completed in 2019, and it determined that the cost for removal was less than half of what the cost to repair is. So, the preferred alternative was dam removal. The decision was to submit grant application to the state. The Commonwealth offers a dam and seawall grant program. It's a competitive grant. They do it annually. They provide 75% grant fund and require 25% local match. The total cost for design and permitting for dam removal is $225,000. There are a lot of permit hurdles to go through in order to remove a water body in the Commonwealth. The submission was made in February this year to the state. We had a couple of phone calls with the state to discuss the project scope. It was reviewed favorably, and we were awarded on June 1st, a grant in the amount of $168,750 to aid us in permitting and design of the removal of the dam. If you remember, a town meeting, $50,000 was approved under the Capital Improvement Plan to be paid for out of the Water Enterprise Fund to support the local match for the dam removal. That was contingent upon this award. So, I'm happy to say that we received a nice hefty grant from the state, and we're ready to go forward with the dam removal design and permitting process.
Thank you very much, Scott. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Kristen?
I'll be really quick. I just want to say that it's my understanding that also it's really good environmentally to get rid of dams. So, this is a win-win.
Yeah, the state has put forth some permitting streamlines relevant to land underwater and bank. When it's a dam removal project, it's referred to as an ecological improvement project, you still have to permit it properly, but they do understand that restoring the landscape and the environment to what it was hundreds of years ago is certainly preferable to these man-made impoundments. It's a good point, Kristen.
Yeah. So, I was just, yeah, I was like, you should, you should add that. You look like, you already look like a rock star, but now you look like a super rock star. So, good for you. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Leslie, you have a comment? You're muted, Leslie.
Scott, what do you envision being the timeline for this?
It's a long process for the design and permitting. We estimate it to be between 18 and 24 months. There's MEPA reviews. There's a lot of public notices. It's important to get a lot of, to gather all the engineering data in advance. There'll be geotechnical borings done on the crest of the dam to determine what kind of soils that will be encountered during removal. One of the considerations during dam removal is sediment transport. What you don't want to do is remove a dam and allow all the sediment that's built up behind the dam to be released downstream, and it impairs the downstream waterway. So, you have to do sediment sampling for quality as well as quantity. It's an exhaustive process. You know, the estimated cost for the removal itself is in the million-dollar range. So, $225,000 for soft costs is substantial for a project, and it certainly represents the complexity of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. So, Scott, has there been a similar grant matching program for the actual removal for the construction or deconstruction?
There is. The same program offers 75%, 25% grant for removal. There are other financial systems that may come in play here. There are some river restoration grants that are out there with the Department of Environmental Resources. There's also the ARPA funds that have been issued. This is an environmental improvement project. MVP has funds available for these types of projects. So, there's a, there's a host of monies out there. And as it has always, you know, we'll certainly pursue as much as a boot we can.
Yeah. And then are there any other structures like this that came up, either through MVP or other items that are kind of like on your radar?
The only other dam that the town owns is the Bartlett Pond Dam, and that dam is considered a low-hazard dam. So, there is no dam safety order on keeping it, on repairing it or maintaining it, considering it's a low-hazard dam. And it's, that's a very small structure, and that is a recreational water body. It's quite a bit different than what we have in our neighboring community.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Scott. And Scott, and John, you have something?
If I may, I just wanted to comment that, you know, this, and Scott would know this, and Jason, you probably do as well from our Capital Improvement Plan, that, you know, these types of projects get identified. This has been in the plan for six years, and one of the reasons why we look out is we want to give ourselves ample time to pursue any grant funding that's out there and available. When Scott Sharpentier realized that these grant funds potentially were available, one of the reasons why we went through the municipal vulnerabilities planning grant process was that that helps us, having gone through that planning process, that helps us apply and be successful in obtaining these grants. So, you know, that's why we have six-year plans out for these types of things, because there's, oftentimes you can find grants, but it sometimes will take you two or three years to get queued up. Sometimes you get rejected. You have to reapply a couple of times. So, again, part of a comprehensive capital planning process, and it worked absolutely perfectly. And of course, Scott really went after this one. So, kudos to him.
Thank you, John. I'll just add my thanks, Scott, for all the work that goes into this, all of the planning, all the coordination with the state, and certainly all the pursuit of dollars, wherever they may lie, to assist us in doing these projects. Any other comments by the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept funds from the Commonwealth of Mass for the purpose of the Northborough Reservoir Dam Removal Project, and to authorize the town administrator to expend such funds.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who did the second.
Julian.
It was Julian. Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Julianne Hirsch. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perot, also vote aye. Carries unanimously. And next up, continuing our discussion with DPW Director Scott Sharpentier, grant of easement at property located at 200 School Street from the town to National Grid. Scott Sharpentier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as we're aware, the Water and Sewer Department is under construction for a new building at 200 School Street. That's at the corner of School and Brigham. The project is well underway. You'll see the shell is erected, the insulation is going in, and we're getting ready for utilities. Part of the process for providing electrical utility to a property is getting a work order through National Grid. Then, National Grid can go forward with the design work. Those work orders are issued to contractors. That work order was issued. National Grid went forward, providing a design for electrical service to serve both buildings, the existing, as well as the new one. The service direction, instead of coming down the driveway, because we're now proposing a 400 amp three-phase service to come in, it needs to come in off of Brigham Street. There's a utility pole on Brigham Street that's roughly across from 213 Brigham. The new pole that National Grid is proposing to install on the property would take that three-phase service off of Brigham Street, bring them into the property, connect to a new utility pole with a transformer on it, and then it would go to our meter and serve the, serve the facility. So, the pole needs to be owned by National Grid because it's going to have a National Grid transformer on it. That's the reason we're here to discuss the easement. It would be fully located on the town property. We have an existing pole on the property that would be no longer needed and removed. This is a new location.
Thank you very much, Scott. Any questions from members of the board? Leslie?
Yes, Scott, real quickly, what is the exact purpose and function of that garage?
Well, the existing garage serves all functions for water and sewer. It has the sanitary facilities. It has our testing station for our, for our meters. It has our controls, computers, our communication gear, and it's where we store all of our equipment and work on our equipment. And the new garage will serve those purposes, and the old garage will be converted to storage. One of the challenges with the existing garage is it was built back when there was only a water department. We now have a water and sewer department, and we have equipment being stored outside, you know, an $80,000 valve-turning trailer that has a subdesdemir, a subdesimeter accurate GPS computer on it. That shouldn't be stored outside where mice can make nests. Our sewer jetter needs to be rapid responded in the event of a sewer pipe clog. When that's stored outside, you have to have antifreeze in it so it doesn't freeze. Well, you can't shoot, you can't jet antifreeze into the sewer system. It's against the law. So, then, in order for us to rapid respond, we clean all the antifreeze out. It's a process. So, certain pieces of equipment need to be indoors when, with the, with the advent of our SCADA system coming onboard and more computer controls, it's important to have a more secure and comfortable area for offices. So, the new garage will serve that purpose, and the old one will be storage.
Perfect. Thanks for that explanation. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Scott Rogers?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. So, Scott, can you talk a little more than what happens with the building after the utilities, the completing a construction and the, kind of the work you've arranged in that area?
Certainly, Scott. The, so, we hired a general contractor through public bid process. His job is to bring in rough-in utilities, erect the envelope, which is the building enclosure, slab, doors, windows, and insulation. And the rough-in utilities are literally pipes coming through the floor with wires and plumbing and the like. That's the scope of the general contractors. Um, that's the scope of the general contractor's contract. Um, we had a meeting last week with the, uh, Assabit Technical Instructors, um, the Assabit Technical High School. Their crews and their students are gonna be out to do the interior fit-out for the building. It's a great opportunity for the school. You know, a lot of these tradesmen and tradeswomen are gonna be working in prefabricated metal buildings in the future. There's not a lot of wood, wood, wood-stick construction going on in, um, in commercial industrial facilities, so it's gonna give them some exposure to something a lot different. Um, they're working with some, some contractors. We've secured, uh, a few con, local contractors who are gonna do, uh, takeoffs for the materials um, at no cost for the town, and they're gonna work with the students. Um, it, it's a, a, a two-way road. They're gonna get exposure, um, to good students who are gonna be looking for, for full-time jobs when they graduate. And on the other side, the, the students will have exposure to real electrical contractors, plumbing and HVAC contractors, and to see how, how the work is really done. Um, it's gonna take a little bit longer, and it's gonna be a lot more work for me because I'm ser, serving as a general contractor. Um, but it saves the, the ratepayers money. Uh, it's great for the kids. Um, a lot of our staff are Assabit graduates, so they're excited about the project. Um, I, I, the, the contractors are excited to get in there and help out. So I think, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a longer run, and it's gonna, but I, I think it's gonna be a fantastic outcome for a revolve.
Uh, thanks. And then what might be a technical question for, for John or Becca? Is there, in terms of the, the, the grant of the easement, are there any terms or conditions that are not standard? Anything that we should really be aware of, in what seems to be pretty standard language?
Yeah, through the chair, it's, it's a standard utility easement.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Scott. Um, any other questions by members of the board? Julian?
Well, Scott, this sounds like a fantastic project, especially since the students are gonna be involved. Um, I just have one question. So it, do, do you have a transformer on the old building now?
No, the, the old building is not a three-phase service, so it comes off of the secondary lines on the poles.
Uh-huh.
You have a three-phase service coming into a property, you need a dedicated transformer. That's why it's coming off of, uh, Brigham Street. So the existing service is like a regular house service. It's gonna be discontinued. We're gonna have a four-hundred-amp service just to provide power to both buildings, because it's a bigger service that needs a new, a new transformer.
Okay, and so do you, uh, would there be any effect on the neighbors in terms of lights or noise or anything like that?
No, there's no change other than we, um, because the utility line route is running through from Brigham Street as opposed from, uh, uh, School Street. There, we had some tree clearing that needs to be done, and it's a wide swath of tree clearing. I did reach out to, well, one of the neighbors reached out to me. I talked to her about, uh, underbrush, uh, growing, and if, if there's a problem with visibility, then we have adequate resources to add, um, woody plant, plants there to, 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 you know, shield her view.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, any other questions? Uh, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to accept and execute the grant of easement to National Grid as presented for town property located at two hundred School Street for the purpose of providing electrical service to the water sewer garage.
Okay.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rattan?
Aye.
And I, pardon me, Jason Perro, also vote aye, carries unanimously. Uh, Scott Sharptier, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work and assistance for these, uh, projects.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
This brings us to reports. Uh, we begin with Kristen Wickstead.
Um, so I don't really have anything to report, I guess.
That's, that's fine, Kristen, yeah.
Is it, if it's, if it's, um, at some point, we will have like committee assignments or other board assignments, and then I will, then I will.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll have those by our next meeting.
Okay.
So that, that's fine, no problem. It's not uncommon for a board member simply to have nothing to report at a particular meeting.
My daughter graduated from college yesterday, so.
There you go. There's a report. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, Julian Hirsch?
Well, um, I just want to pick up on, on Kristen's question, because I've been thinking about this for a little while. On our selectments page on the website, I wonder if, um, there's a way of listing our liaison assignments so that if people have a question about, you know, cultural council, they could address a question to me or something like that. Is that something we could consider?
We could probably just post the, um, the PDF file that, uh, lists all the assignments once it's finalized.
Great, okay.
On that page, just, we'll just put a link on the page to that, uh, that list.
Good. Um, and, and I just have a couple of things. Um, one is on June tenth, Carrie Martinet from Planning Board and I attended a CMRPC meeting and awards dinner where Kristen Black, our health agent, was among the group accepting an award for regional collaboration for Central Massachusetts Boards of Health. So many thanks and congratulations to Kristen for her work in Northborough and beyond. Um, also, I did inquire about the traffic audit that CMRPC is helping us with because initially, the plan was to have the stakeholders meeting sometime in August. Um, but the, the current plan is to get more data once school starts and everything is fully operational there. So the meeting probably won't be held until middle, uh, fall. Um, and one more thing that I would like to request for a future meeting is to have on the agenda a discussion and maybe a list of projects that have, that, that will be put back online, so to speak. Things like master plan implementation, um, town hall, um, White Cliffs. Things that necessarily during COVID had to take a backseat. And, you know, I, I should pause and acknowledge the hard work that our staff did during that, that year and more. But people are starting to ask now, what's with this project, what's with that project? So, um, I'm just requesting that at a future meeting, because summer meetings can tend to be a little light, that we discuss how and when those meetings will happen. And that ends my report.
Very good. Thank you, Julian. Uh, Scott Rogers?
Yeah, thank you. I guess there's been a number of, of meetings that I've attended since, uh, our last report. So did, uh, work with, uh, Library, had their last remote meeting, and I know where, we've got meetings, uh, and their next one will be in person, but I know we've got meetings on our agenda. I know we have Diversity and Inclusion Committee, uh, on our agenda to talk a little bit more tonight. Like to thank the chiefs for their monthly reports. Thank you for those reports as always. And then, uh, some special thanks and meetings, uh, first I met with, uh, Town Engineer Fred Litchfield, and just want to say thank you to him for giving me a tutorial on stormwater management and drainage, just so I have a better understanding of how some of those projects work. Also, our conservation agent, Mia McDonald, uh, she was, uh, able to help me with, uh, a couple site wa, walkthroughs and understanding better wetlands delineation and, and protections and erosion controls. So a shout out to those fabulous staff members for taking the time out of their day and let me tag along on some of their business. The other items that have happened, I, I'm gonna wait on that. We've got some topics coming up tonight that I'll probably have some questions, but they are the result of some meetings that happened during our periods, so nothing more to report.
Thank you very much, Scott. Uh, Leslie?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank all who participated in the Memorial Day video. Uh, very, very nicely done. I wanted to thank Jason for your, your words. Very, very nice. Uh, Northbrook Cable Access, as always, and American Legion Post two thirty-four. Just a very nice video. It seemed to get a lot of views, and I, I know people really appreciate the words that people put together for that and the ceremony that took place. Um, also, I liked the town email that came out about, for example, the, um, opening on the Earthwork Board. I, I like the fact that we can get emails out about different vacancies that come up. I think the more the merrier with that. I think a lot of people have signed up, and I would ask that more people sign up for the, uh, the town emails. You can get agendas, meeting minutes, um, so forth. And I think this is a great thing to have people realize that, that openings are out there, and we do need good volunteers. And, uh, I think those town emails do go a long way. At least I'm hoping they do. I would also like to congratulate all the twenty-twenty-one Northborough graduates. Uh, we have a lot of kids in town. They attend a variety of high schools, including Elgonquin, Assabit, Ampsa, St. John's, um, maybe a face school, I don't know. But I just want to congratulate everyone, uh, for all the graduation, all the hard work that goes into getting to that point. That's a big deal, and, uh, I'm very happy for all the graduates from Northborough. I also want to thank the police chief and the fire chief for their detailed monthly reports. Um, police department had, uh, it looks like over fifteen hundred, uh, calls, uh, for the month of this May. Um, very interesting details that you put in your report, Chief, I appreciate that. Uh, the fire department had two hundred and seven calls, a great majority are EMS, um, uh, but excluding motor vehicle accidents with injury, I think is what it said. Okay. Um, and also, I appreciate all the work that's done by our, uh, department in terms of the mutual aid to other communities. Looks like primarily Shrewsbury, uh, this past month, um, we provided mutual aid for, so I, I think that's fantastic that all the communities work together like that. And I also wanted to, my last thing is to, um, ask Scott about the new crosswalk that I have seen discussed on social media at, um, Hudson Street and Center Drive. Um, wanted to find out what the evolution of that project was, and wanted to mention that there was a nice comment I saw uh, where someone said, "Thank you, Northborough DPW, for our crosswalk light," with about four or five exclamation points. Consider yourselves hugged. So attention, everyone. If you speed along Hudson Street, north or south, there is now a crosswalk light at the junction of Center Drive. Our community loves the DPW who did the hard work of installation. We are also sending love to the leadership of the town who made it all possible. We are now safe. So that, that's a great project. Uh, could you explain how that evolved, Scott?
Uh, certainly, through the chair. We, uh, Chief Liver, myself, and, uh, Town Engineer Fred Litchfield got together. We put together some, uh, evaluation protocols for, uh, crosswalk, or for pedestrian enhancements at crosswalks. Um, there's a variety of ways to, uh, improve pedestrian safety at crosswalks, uh, relocation of them, introduction of bumpouts, additional pavement markings, additional advanced warning signs. Um, and part of the, uh, decision on what crosswalks receive treatment, uh, includes the, the users and the destination. You know, there, if there's a, uh, an at-risk, uh, user group, and there's a high-use destination, that elevates it along the priority list. Um, so we have senior housing on Center Drive. There's a destination with ninety-nine cent coffees at Couple and Farms. That's one of my destinations. And, um, it's at a tough location geometrically, uh, along the roadway. And there are a lot of advanced warning signs with the low bridge, so there's a bit of a sign clutter, uh, condition going on in that second of Hudson Street. So it was a logical location for, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons for a crosswalk. Um, it is a different vendor than we installed on a Northgate. Our goal and objective was to try two or three different vendors to find out which we liked the best and establish, uh, what is essentially a town of North Grove standard, um, system. So it's a little bit different looks than the one at Northgate and, um, uh, South Street, but it, uh, functions exactly the same, and I was happy we were able to help out that, uh, that, that, that target community.
Mm-hmm. That's wonderful. I like, I'm seeing a lot of excitement around crosswalks. That's kind of one of my things, and I think it's, uh, I like seeing people happy about that. Um, and they're very important to our community. I think right now, as I drive around, I see a lot of good signage, um, around them, and neon green signs and so forth. They seem to be in, in pretty good shape for the most part, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, for my report, I'd like to add my congratulations, uh, to the, uh, high school graduates, um, from all schools for Northborough residents. Uh, certainly another challenging year, and, uh, uh, they survived it. They got through graduation, and they certainly perhaps had a, uh, you know, graduation ceremony in celebration more in line with what we've come to expect. Uh, so making forward progress there. Um, I'd like to note that, uh, back on May twentieth, uh, the Northborough-Southborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council, NSPAC, uh, held their annual Go-the-Distance Awards via Zoom. Normally, that's an in-person gathering. Uh, the organization, uh, generally is a group of parents who, uh, uh, who have children who require, uh, who have special needs or require special assistance in their, uh, educational, um, path. And, uh, these awards recognize, uh, school staff and community volunteers who provide that additional assistance. Um, this year, uh, in consideration of the additional challenges of the COVID-nineteen environment, uh, they expanded their recognition. They had something like fifty-six award winners and an additional twenty-six honorable mentions. Um, so, uh, we certainly, uh, appreciate the work of all of those individuals who are providing that extra assistance. And, uh, if you'd like to see the awards presentation or get more information, you can go to www.nspac.org. Uh, that's their website, and, uh, you can find more information about that group. Uh, just like to note, this coming Saturday, June nineteenth, is, uh, known as Juneteenth. Uh, June nineteen, eighteen sixty-five, Union Army General Gordon Granger, uh, made declaration of freedom from slavery in the state of Texas. Uh, this is kind of the culmination, uh, of, of the movement, uh, for freedom. And that date is increasingly growing in recognition as, uh, as a, as a special, uh, date marking that, uh, that event. So I just wanted to make note of that. And finally, today, June fourteenth, is Flag Day. June fourteenth, seventeen seventy-seven, uh, the second content of the Congress first adopted the Stars and Stripes in its first incarnation that we know as our United States flag. So once again, just noting that event for today. That concludes my report. Uh, John, do you have anything?
I just want to let the board know, uh, reentry in terms of having all of our buildings open to the public has gone extremely well. It's actually really nice to see the building sort of alive again with people coming in. It's been, um, you know, a big part of what we do is serve the public, and although you can do that online and by phone, um, there's nothing like helping somebody, uh, face-to-face. Um, the only little thing with the indulgence of the board, I just want to congratulate my daughter, Grace Codair, who just graduated from Elgonquin Regional High School. So congratulations. And the school department, I have to say, um, having been to graduations indoors and outdoors, uh, I just want to say that the administration did a fantastic job of adding some normalcy, uh, for the kids at the end. They had a real graduation, and they had real events, and, uh, and it didn't go unnoticed. It made a world of difference, uh, from the kids that I know, so I just want to say, great job, uh, on behalf of the, uh, the parents in this case, um, to the administration, uh, schools, they just did a terrific job, so thank you.
Hey, thank you, John. Uh, that brings us to public comment. So let me explain the process here. Public comment's an opportunity for a member of the public to raise an issue, concern, or question to the attention of the board. The board will not engage in debate or deliberate on an issue raised during public comment. If there's a relatively simple informational question that staff can respond to, we will try to do so. Um, if you wish to speak, uh, you can raise your hand in Zoom. If you're in the webinar, there's a button to do so. If you're calling by audio, uh, I don't see anyone connected that way at the moment. You can press star nine if you're connected that way. Um, I will admit, uh, each person who wishes to be heard, um, into the meeting, please first state your full name and address, and then you will have three minutes to, uh, to present your concern. So with that, uh, the first person up that I see is Mitch Cohen. I'm bringing you in, Mitch.
Hi, everybody. This is Mitch Cohen of Twelve Whitney Street. The pandemic finally appears to be winding down. There haven't been many upsides of the pandemic, but one is that you haven't had to hear me ask for increased video coverage of public meetings in a really long time. Remote meetings have led to increased public awareness and participation. This has been wonderful. More people aren't just watching your meetings, but watching and participating in all the meetings that have never been televised. And that's been a huge win for the town. Town staff has truly done a marvelous job making this work so well. I know the governor's emergency order expires tonight, and that you'll be discussing this issue later in the meeting. The legislature appears to be ready to approve laws to fully, to allow fully- The legislature appears to be ready to approve laws to fully, to allow fully remote meetings to continue for at least the next several months. Some bills under consideration later this term would make this permanent. I hope the board will support continued video coverage of all municipal meetings, no matter what the legislature decides. If permitted, continued remote public participation should also be allowed and encouraged. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mitch. And would anyone else care to offer any public comment? I do not currently see any hands going once, going twice. And public comment is concluded. Thank you very much. Onto new business. The first item, discussion regarding feedback from the Diversity and Inclusion Committee regarding appointments. This concerns the situation where a former selectman, Tim Kalin, was the designee of this board as a member and a participant on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Following this past election, Tim opted not to run. And so technically, we have an issue to address with that continued participation or the participation of a current board member. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee is an ad hoc committee with a limited timeframe, ending at the end of this calendar year, to explore various concerns and options with respect to diversity and inclusion and to bring those recommendations to this Board of Selectmen for consideration of what future actions we might take. I'm going to ask Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. At our last meeting, there had been some some, well, not confusion, but a question about how we should approach this circumstance of Tim Kalin continuing to serve or not on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And one thing we did was to ask the, sorry about that, one thing we did was to ask the diversity, very sorry. One thing we did was to ask the Diversity and Inclusion Committee members to consider it themselves, what they can, you know, what they considered important for the situation and to submit back to us their feedback about how they would like to proceed. So we have in our folders the statement from that committee. And actually, I'll be happy to read this aloud. "June 4th, 2021, dear Honorable Board of Selectmen members, at the May 2021 meeting of the Northborough Diversity and Inclusion Committee, the committee considered the question posed by the selectmen regarding changing or adding members to the current Diversity and Inclusion Committee. The members of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee understand that the membership of the Board of Selectmen has changed and the current representative from the board is no longer a sitting member of the elected body. However, the committee feels that given the timing of the turnover and the fact that the committee is six months into its year-long commitment to provide recommendations to the selectmen, it would be difficult to change the composition of the committee now. We would ask that the Board of Selectmen allow Tim Kalin to continue to serve in his current role as Diversity and Inclusion Chair. The committee is confident in Tim's ability to lead the group through this endeavor and to provide direction and communicate when needed to the board and to the town staff. We appreciate the Board of Selectmen's inquiry with respect to their representative to the committee, but currently we are excited about continuing to move forward with our work and to provide the board with recommendations on making Northborough a more welcoming and inclusive community. We always welcome input from any community members on matters of diversity, equity, and inclusion in Northborough. We look forward to providing an update on the committee's work to the board at a future meeting and plan to make full recommendations to the board in the late fall of 2021. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, the Northborough Diversity and Inclusion Committee." So that was the statement and the feedback from the committee itself about their viewpoint on the current situation. There seem to be, I guess in my mind, three possibilities here. One would be that going by a strict application of how we originally composed the committee, that would be to replace Tim with a current sitting member of this board. The second option would be to have Tim continue as a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, as a citizen member, and have a member of this board be added to the committee as a participating member. And the third option would be for having Tim continue as a citizen member of the board and just simply appoint one of our board members to be a liaison, in effect, a non-participating member, but a designated point of contact for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, similar to how we have that arrangement with some of our other committee liaisons. Comment from any members of the board? Opinions? Kristin?
I just, I thought you were gonna ask if Becca was gonna say something.
Sorry. Right, thank you, Kristin. Becca, I apologize. I went on this long digression here to kind of give some more background and please, could you offer your viewpoints as the staff member who sits and participates on the committee?
Sure. So I think, you know, I do think that the letter states pretty thoroughly the committee's view. We did have a meeting. We had a pretty lengthy discussion and we did draft the letter. The only thing I think that I would add is, and this is a point that was brought up at the diversity meeting, is that I am, you know, a staff member who does attend all the diversity meetings and I also attend all the Board of Selectmen meetings. So if there ever was a need for this board to communicate something to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I would obviously be happy to do that at any time. And the same goes for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. They know that I am always ready, willing, and able to communicate anything that's needed from them to this board. But other than that, you know, Jason, I think the letter says it all and I appreciate you reading out loud and I'm happy to take questions if the board has any.
Thank you, Becca. Board members. Leslie?
Yeah, well, I think that based on what Becca just said and based on what this letter says, it sounds like the committee enjoys the current makeup of the committee, feels it is productive and especially since there is an end time to it, that there's really no reason to rock the boat, I guess is a phrase I would use for this. I don't, certainly don't like the idea of replacing Tim because I think he is doing a good job. He's obviously well-regarded and well-respected on that committee. Also, as Becca said, Becca's here. Becca attends the meetings. There is plenty of conduit from that particular committee to our board without having to have someone from our board actually become a member of that committee. I don't think it would need to be done that way in order to ensure communication, for example. So my preferred option would be that Tim remains and that this become a position for a member of our board to be a liaison to that, so that the charter is fulfilled in that regard.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Yes, to explain, this is an ad hoc committee formed by the Board of Selectmen for a stated purpose and a finite timeframe. It's not a standing committee. It's not defined by charter. And so seemingly this board has some flexibility to adapt to the circumstances as needed or as appropriate for this situation. Any other members with comments? Kristin?
Yeah, so in that, in the interest of that, does it make sense for efficiency's sake to just keep everything the way it is and the only change you make is that Becca is the liaison to the Board of Selectmen officially? Or do we even need to do that because it could be an unofficial liaison?
Right. So I think it's whatever the board feels comfortable with. If you feel that you would prefer to have a board member designated in a liaison role, you know, we could certainly do that if we're comfortable with Becca, Assistant Town Administrator, as a participating member and having close ties to this board and also Tim by the fact of his prior services as a member of the Board of Selectmen, who's familiar with all the people involved and certainly doesn't hesitate to make his, you know, viewpoints known if there's anything that needs to be communicated. I think it's really a question of what this board is comfortable with in terms of the working arrangement, so.
Right.
Yes, Leslie?
I like that idea because that would be option four and as long as there's no issue, as long as there's no issue with Becca being Assistant Town Administrator and a member of that particular committee and is a liaison, as long as there's no issue with that, I think that's a great idea. You know, at some point are we rocking the boat too much and stirring the pot when it's not really necessary, so.
Sure, thank you, Leslie. Any other board member have a comment? Julian?
I just have a question. And Becca, maybe you know the answer to this. What, how do you see your timeline here? Like when, when will you, how many more meetings do you think you'll have and when will you be reporting a final recommendations?
So, so we need, so we meet twice a month. So just to, so just so everyone knows, we meet twice a month. The first meeting of the month is typically a meeting where we invite someone in. It can be another board of committee. It can be town staff. And then the second meeting of the month is for us to put together our, you know, recommendations, go through them, you know, present research. We are hoping to make a mid-year, midway presentation to this board next month. So members of the committee will come in and just sort of give the board a full update on what we've done so far and where we're headed and give you a little taste of what to expect at the end of all this. And I expect that we will make full recommendations to the board in the late fall. We want to try to get in ahead of budget season so that if there are any financial impacts to the recommendations, obviously administration and this board has time to consider those those financial impacts ahead of the FY '23 budget season. So that's sort of a tentative timeline. You know, we have six months left and two meetings a month, so, you know, I'd say we have 12 meetings left roughly. We may have to meet more towards the end depending on our timeline and how things shake out, but we're in a pretty good rhythm right now. We've spoken to a lot of staff members, a lot of committees. We had a great meeting last week with the Community Affairs Committee. There's definitely a long-range partnership there. So we're well on our way.
Okay, thanks for that update.
Sure.
Thank you, Becca. John, you have something?
Yeah, just not to, if the board would like to assign a liaison from the board, that's fine. I just, it's really not appropriate for the board to assign a member of staff to be a liaison. So Becca certainly can function. She can report back, that type of thing, but it's really not appropriate to assign a board member, or I'm sorry, a staff member. So if you would like to sign a member of the board, you think that, you think you need to do anything differently, you, of course, that's within your discretion, but Becca is sort of off the table in that regard. It would not be appropriate.
Yep. Okay, thank you, John. Leslie?
Okay, well, so if that's not something that we really should or could do, knowing that Becca attends all of their meetings and all of our meetings anyway, obviously she's available to do the updates about those meetings anyway. So she wouldn't really need to be formally recognized as a liaison, but is obviously here anyway. So is that enough? Would that suffice in this case?
I think it would be satisfactory to have Becca give us informational updates. Wouldn't be designated as a liaison specifically, but in her capacity as a staff member who's also participating in that committee, we could expect the information flow, you know, to come through that channel.
No different than any other staff member coming and giving you an update like you've heard from DPW tonight.
Right. So any other comments, any other opinions about how we should approach this? Hearing none. So do I have?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a motion to retain Tim Kalin as a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and continue to lead that effort in lieu of a member of the Board of Selectmen being designated as a participating member?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to continue the appointment of Tim Kalin as the board's designee to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
So.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perrow, will also vote aye, so it carries unanimously. Retaining Tim Kalin as the board's designee to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and having access to Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins, also a participant on that committee for any informational updates that might come our way prior to that committee bringing forward its formal recommendations. Very good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. Next item is the vote to rescind the local state of emergency. John, would you care to?
I would love to do it. It's a big moment. So as you're aware, let me just by backing up a little bit. So on March 10th, 2020, the governor declared a state of emergency in the Commonwealth. On March 23rd, the Board of Selectmen of Northborough declared a state of emergency as well. Now normally when you declare a state of emergency, it has some significant meaning. In this case here, it wasn't so much that we needed to take extraordinary actions or emergency powers, so much as we wanted to make sure that our state of emergency coincided with the governor's so that if there was any funding and emergency assistance that became available, that it would not be a question that we were in fact in a state of emergency. So on May 28th, the governor voted to rescind his state of emergency. I believe it was COVID Order Number 69. So at this point in time, it would be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to rescind the town of Northborough's emergency, state of emergency. And I would make, I would recommend that be made effective to coincide with the governor's rescinding as effective at 12:01 a.m. on June 15th, 2021. Certainly answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions by members of the board? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to be the one reading this. It's very exciting.
Big moment.
Got that one by accident, Leslie.
Yes, yes. This is, this is great. I may print this one out and keep it. I move the board vote to end the state of emergency declared on March 23rd, 2020, relating to COVID-19, affected at 12:01 a.m. on June 15th, 2021. The time at which the state of emergency declared by the governor on March 10th, 2020 will end as set forth in the governor's order of May 28th, 2021, COVID-19 Order Number 69.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any further discussion? Seeing none. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perrow, vote aye. Carries unanimously. As of 12:01 a.m. tomorrow, we will no longer be in a state of emergency in the town of Northborough. Next item is update of state legislation regarding remote participation in public meetings. We had the public comment just a few moments ago. We had the public comment just a few moments ago from Mitch Cohen advocating for continued. Video recording and. Remote participation for public meetings. John, could you just take us through whatever the current state?
Or.
Effort is?
So as we said, so as we said, the governor declared a state of emergency on March tenth of twenty twenty. On March twelfth of twenty twenty, using his state of emergency powers. He suspended certain provisions of section twenty of Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight. Thus allowing cities and towns to conduct meetings remotely. So with the conclusion of the state of emergency, that authority. Goes away. Now, for folks at home that may be listening. We have a very different relationship with the state compared to, say, the state to the federal government. Where, you know, the state and the federal government are equals. We are creatures of the state, so we only have the authority to do the things that have been delegated to us. So we don't have the legal authority to continue with remote meetings on our own. On, if you remember, on February eighth, the Board of Selectmen put together its legislative priorities. We met with our delegation at your March meeting. One of the things we discussed with them was that we would like the legislature to please continue. Allowing the towns to conduct remote meetings, you know, has increased participation. Transparency, these are all good things. So the board has already taken a position on this, as well as the Mass Municipal Association, included in your packet was testimony. That was provided to the legislature. I guess my only concern here is that the governor indicated that he was going to file legislation. The legislature, the Senate and the House all seem willing to to do so. However, they just didn't quite get it done before the. Emergency state of emergency was rescinded. So so we are going to have this little gap here. So effective tomorrow. We don't have a legal authority to conduct remote meetings in their entirety. So if you recall, under Mass General Law, there are provisions to allow some. Remote participation by board members. However, it requires the chair to be physically present and the majority to be. Physically present and allows certain members under certain conditions to participate remotely. So right now, there's dueling legislation at the House level as the Senate and the Senate level. So they're going to ultimately get together. I believe the Senate was debating theirs. On June tenth. So so they're going to wind up getting together, probably have conference committee iron out the the details and hopefully. Move forward with with some sort of new regulatory framework under which we could operate. But I think I guess the important thing for folks to to take away is that the intent is that the remote participation. Particularly the public's remote participation is what we want to, you know, we want to preserve. Now, we have the ability to take remote participation by the public by phone. Zoom has added a completely different level. We have begun working with both cable access and our IT to to see what that infrastructure, because it will need some significant. Technological upgrades to make this happen. But I think based on the board's prior. Prior priorities that were submitted to the to the state delegation, that this is something that we're looking to see continue. So there's going to be some technical things that need to be worked out. Once we get the regulatory framework, in other words, once the legislature says, these are the new rules. Then I think there's going to be some action on behalf of the board. The board will need to make some, within the the four corners of that new legislation. The board will need to make some policy decisions. In other words, are you going to allow board members to participate remotely? Or require them to be here and only let public participate remotely? Are you going to allow boards? Well, we don't know yet. Does the legislation can allow boards to participate remotely entirely, the entire board? So there's all these unknowns. So first, what we need is we need the regulatory framework to get locked down by the state. Within that, the Board of Selectmen needs to make some policy decisions about how you'd like to proceed. But I think at this point in time, the important thing for folks to understand is that we're looking to continue this. In a way that makes sense and a way that's manageable, and it will require some. Some technology upgrades. And there are also maybe limits, depending on the costs and the logistics of it. You know, it's. You know, we may be limited to, you know, just the selectmen's meeting room that is wired to do this. But of course, as you know, as we get in closer to town meeting, it's not uncommon for us to have. Three, four, five, you know, boards meeting all at the same time in our physical building. Just isn't set up that way. We don't even have the conference room space to wire a bunch of them. But but these are things that we can we can look at and work on. I think, again, the important thing is that the board has taken a policy position already. Advocating for that remote participation. The legislature has heard it. They're working through their legislative process to bring forward something. Then that the board can typically, it would be a local option to adopt it. And then you would create your policies around it and fill in any gaps. Or discretionary areas that the legislation allows for the board. So that's kind of where we are. So we're waiting to to get the, I can't believe that they let a gap come like this. We also, we kind of anticipated, and I still, we still right up to today or Friday. Were anticipating that, you know, they were just going to extend it. All indications from the legislature and from the governor's office were. That they were just going to extend these provisions through the calendar year and give people time to. To assess what they wanted to do, work out the legislation. So that. In law likelihood will probably be be a part of what gets approved ultimately is just an extension of of these. Of these remote meeting provisions for some time period. I believe the latest in the Senate Bill twenty-four sixty-seven, I think it has it rolling until April of twenty twenty-two. So, again, we need the legislative framework within which we then would make our policy decisions and round it out. But I believe the intention. Is pretty clear what we'd like to see happen and how we'd like to implement that. So with that, we can answer any questions, at least limited what we can tell you right now. But again, until the legislature completes its work and we have the. The regulatory framework, it's, you know, it's hard to know exactly what's going to come out the other side of a conference committee, so.
Thank you very much, John. I think that the. The two extremes are easy to accommodate. If it's all in person, everyone has to be in the room. If it's fully remote by Zoom only. Everyone has to be connected by Zoom. Either of those two options is relatively easy to accommodate. It's the hybrid model. Partially in person and partial remote participation that complicates things in terms of video, audio support. And getting everything connected together correctly, so. Looking forward to more information about what the state is going to permit. And then see where we need to be in terms of technology support to to do what we want to do. Leslie, you had a comment?
Yes, I'm not knowing when we're going to hear for certain. We have a meeting in July. So it sounds like what we need to do is unless we hear otherwise, we need to meet in person. In July.
Actually, we we have a meeting the twenty-eighth of June.
I'm sorry, twenty, well, you know, that, right, the June.
Two weeks from tonight.
How long is some kind of shooting out of it in the future, but. You know, what can we do so that? The public can continue to call in the way they've been doing?
Well, to the chair, if I may, I mean, we're going to look into options, but, you know. The type of technology upgrades that we're talking about, realistically trying to get them implemented and in place, we're probably looking at a couple of months. Whether or not, to what extent things can be done sooner, it remains to be seen. So we've got some. We have some outreach and some discussions that we've already begun, but I don't have anything concrete. And again, we don't want to go off in any direction too fast, only to have the legislature decide, well, we're not going to allow. We're not going to allow that. So so we are, we're assuming that. The legislature. I shouldn't say this. I should never assume what the legislature is going to do, but. We assume that there's going to be some provision to just extend the way things are right now through the calendar year. That's what we're hoping to give us some time. But then the board's going to need to make, again, some policy decisions about, you know, you don't. Is it going to be, you know, up to each board and committee to decide how they're going to do this? There needs to be some formal policy decisions and structure, and that is a role. Of the Board of Selectmen to determine what that will be. So. So we're looking, we're doing some some review. As of right now, your 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 next meeting will be in person. And, you know, we've had twenty-five years of, you know. Running our meetings in person without Zoom, but it might take. Again, if something passes between now and your next meeting that says you can continue to meet remotely. The board, I guess that's a question for the board. Do you want to continue in this format? And then really, nothing has changed. You don't have to meet in person if the legislature allows it. And then it gives us time to to work out how a hybrid model would would work out.
Yes, Leslie.
I guess my question is, though, that if we don't hear anything before the next meeting. Again, it says, you know, under hybrid meetings, that there's nothing that precludes our board from allowing public comment during, public comment. Via virtual means. So so that we don't go too far in terms of making adjustments to our technology. In affecting the budget and so forth. Is there something that can be jury-rigged at that point just to allow people to call in? Because. I don't like the idea that there could be a gap between. We, you know, this is great what we're doing now, and then we know nothing, and then all of a sudden, we can't accept any phone calls, and then all of a sudden, then we can. And what what can we do in the gap that is inexpensive, but allows the public to do what they have been doing?
Well, just again, for the record, this is the legislature that is causing this ambiguity here by their failure to. Take this up in a timely manner. Leslie, I'm hesitant to make any promises. In, you know, two weeks with everything else that we have on our plate. So what I'm hopeful for, frankly, is that the legislature will allow, and these are the indications that we're getting, will allow remote meetings. And in which case we can continue with the format that we have right now. For at least our next couple of meetings and give us some time to work out what a hybrid would look like and how that would would work. Because I'm not entirely clear what frankly would be would be required. And how long it takes to get that infrastructure in place. And you mentioned jury-rig that. The last thing I want is, you can't, it's got, whatever it is, it's got to be dependable. Because if someone calls in and they're dropped or it doesn't work. That has implications for public hearings and and other. Potential legal issues for us. So whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's solid and that we're clear that we're on good footing.
Well, that was a poor choice of words on my part.
No, I know what you meant, though. Like, and we've had those discussions internally. It's just, you know, it's it's really, the idea of, we want to continue somehow. Blending in with with a Zoom-type platform, it's a little bit more complicated. If you remember, we tried to do this. When when it first hit, we tried to do a little bit of this with cable access to some. Limited success, but there were a lot of technical issues doing that. So. We want to make sure that we have time to work all that out and that whatever we use is consistent and reliable and. It will stand the public records test at the end of the day.
Y'all set, Leslie?
Um, yeah. Again, I don't I don't mean to say that it should be some, you know, strange. Week, you know, people hanging on phone lines or anything like that. It just needs to be something that's semi-dependable that we can use in the interim that allows us to continue what. What we've been doing.
Yeah, and to the chair, we'll we'll look at that. I just don't want to promise you that we're going to be able to do that a week.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, Julian.
So so I just want to say that at the last CMR PC meeting. It was a hybrid of Zoom and in-person meeting, and. I can't speak to the technological. Difficulties or non-difficulties. They use some kind of gadget called an owl. And but from my point of view, as a participant in the room, it it seemed to be, it seemed to go very well. So I think I think what I'm wondering is. Clearly, other towns are going to be investigating all of this also, and. Would we suspect that the MMA will give us some advice about, you know, best practices on this? Or does every town have to reinvent the wheel?
Through the chair. So the, as far as the technology, we'll figure that out. The policy decision will be the boards in terms of how you would like this to work. But that, whatever you decide from a policy standpoint, it has to fit within the four corners of the enabling legislation, which we we haven't seen yet. But we'll figure out, the technology piece will figure out. It's it's a matter of money. The problem, one of the issues, and Beck and I were having this conversation. Just before the meeting is that, you know, everybody's doing this. So, you know, just finding consultants and vendors to to do the work. Can be a little bit, potentially a little bit challenging, but, you know, again, this is, you know, nothing that can't be overcome. I just. Don't want to tell you it's going to happen in in two weeks if I can't get a vendor in here for three weeks, you know, that type of thing. So. That's what we're working through.
That's perfectly understandable. Thank you.
Sure.
Like, the bottom line summary is we're working toward that goal to allow participation.
Yeah, I think the understanding is that we all know where we want to, we all know where we want to wind up, so.
The timeframe to get to what what the goal is is uncertain at the moment, and. To the extent that meetings will be required to be in person, I think anyone. Who has important business before a border committee over these next couple of weeks, for the moment. Ought to be planning to be at the meeting. And not assuming for the moment that they will have an opportunity to participate remotely. That's the conservative guidance I would give someone until we have. Better direction from the legislation that will be changing and have a better idea of how we need to approach it in order to provide the appropriate support. Yes, John?
The only other caution I would say is, you know, if you remember when this all hit, there were a number of communities that were up and running and working with Zoom before we were. They also got Zoom bombed and had all kinds of security issues, none of which, I'll knock on wood, we have experienced here. So again, other people in other venues might be able to do things, but. You have to look at what we have to do as a open public organization. We need to make sure that the security is there. And we don't have any issues like that. Again, none of this is insurmountable. It's just going to take a little bit of time, a little bit of money, hopefully not a lot of money. And and I think the technology is is come a long way, even during the pandemic, the technology has improved. Zoom as an application has improved considerably, particularly when we looked at these types of things years ago. Number one concern that we had was the security, being able to maintain security. And so I think those types of things have evolved, and that's been one of the positive things that's come out of the pandemic. Is is that this technology is is more hardy and available for public users like us that are opening. Our meetings up to the public. That's very different than you work in an organization and the only people that are meeting and doing hybrids are, it's a secure link and it's just your folks. You know, we have to be prepared for, you know, making sure that. Things are secure and we don't have any issues or problems as a number of other communities experienced when they went to Zoom initially, so.
Yes, Julian.
Well, I I just want to add that as we proceed with this discussion over the next, however, amount of time. That we keep on the table the possibility of recording all of the meetings. As our, as the, as Mitch Cohen commented earlier, because that is another. Another feature that people have really enjoyed. So just, you know, as we move forward, let's keep that on the table, too, please.
Yep. Kristen.
I just want to throw out there that there are quite a number of people in this town who actually really enjoy these meetings. And they watch them on YouTube later and they call them the show. Really funny. I keep meeting people and they're like, oh, I saw you on the show the other day, so.
I I don't want to ask what our ratings are.
So, anyway, just a little comic relief there. We're popular.
Thank you very much. Any any final questions on this topic? I guess we understand what the situation is, waiting for the state to work its issues out and. One way or another, moving toward a goal that will accommodate increased remote participation compared to what we had experienced prior to COVID. Okay, we'll move on. Next item is approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two NEDP memorandum of understanding. John?
Sure. So Northborough Extended Day is a nonprofit organization that's been very closely aligned with the town. Actually, at one point. Sure. So Northborough Extended Day is a nonprofit organization that's, uh, been very closely aligned, uh, with the town. Actually, at one point, our staff, our Family Services Director was the Executive Director and the formal staff to this, uh, program. NEDP provides after-school programming, uh, in our, uh, in our, uh, K-28 schools. And so, um, they physically have an office in our building. And we've had a longstanding agreement with them. So this agreement, uh, goes back, you know, 30 years in some form or another. Uh, but essentially, uh, they, uh, pay us, uh, in offset to, uh, be physically located in our building. And, um, what we get, the town as a benefit, uh, is that there's a shared admin in that office for family services. And this arrangement actually pays for that, uh, admin. And so, uh, I think it's a, it's been a very positive symbiotic relationship and longstanding, as I said, going back 30 years. So essentially, under the memorandum of agreement that's in your packet, uh, I'm proposing a three and a half percent increase to the payment to the town. So it will go from, uh, $24,877, uh, to, uh, $25,748 in FY22. Payments are made in two installments, um, and, uh, and that compensates the town, uh, adequately for the space and the shared administrative, uh, position. So what I would ask this evening, uh, this has been reviewed by their board of directors. They're already, they've already signed off and in favor of it, pending approval, uh, by the board this evening.
Thank you, John. Uh, any, uh, questions or comments from members of the board? Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, John, any changes to, to terms and conditions? This is just a continuation of the same.
No, no, no changes to terms and conditions.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, do I have a motion?
I move the board vote to approve the fiscal year 2022 Annual Memorandum of Understanding between the town and Northborough Extended Day Program, Inc., for the use of office space and facilities at the town hall and to authorize the town administrator to execute same.
Second.
Moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. If I can find my pen. Uh, very good. Thank you. Um, next up is execution of cemetery deeds. 1118, 1119, and 1120. Do I have a motion?
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds 1118, 1119, and 1120.
Moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. Again, a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Any other business to come before the board, John?
Uh, just a need for a brief executive session.
Very good. The board will now move to executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, Litigation, Marlboro Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Subsection 6, Fire Station Project at 61 and 65 West Main Street. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board, do I have a motion practically verbatim to what I just stated?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, Litigation, Marlboro Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Subsection 6, Fire Station Project at 61 and 65 West Main Street. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Uh, I saw your lips move, Scott Rogers. Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Uh, this concludes our business for open meeting. The board will now move to executive session. There's no more open meeting business to conduct this evening. Thank you all very much. Good night.